County Commission meeting, the last one in September in the budget year. We will have education again by Commissioner Sankey and clear by Commissioners.
Let us pray. Father God, here we are once again to speak with you, not because you did not hear it's the first time, but it's just always good to commune with you and to just to be in your present. We just thank you for that opportunity. We thank you now again of this body of county government. We thank you for those who participate on a daily basis. And we ask that you would just continue to lead, guide us in all our steps as we continue to be the best that we can be and to take care of those, Lord God, who are less fortunate and help them to find their voice. We thank you now, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Okay, Florence, stab of the quorum.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Chairman Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Here.
Vice Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I got a list of citizens that have signed up to come before the commission. You have three minutes for your remarks. First is Raymond Robinson. Raymond Robinson.
I'd like to say good morning and I'd like to thank the County Commission for allowing me to come down to talk this morning. I just wanted to give you a brief information about what the National Federation for the Blind is. The National Federation for the Blind was established in 1942, so they've been around a long time. And the way the National Federation for the Blind work is we have a national center which is in Baltimore, Maryland, that's our president, Roseanne, he's our main president in Baltimore, Maryland. And then each state that participates also has a Federation for the Blind. We have one here in Alabama called National Federation for the Blind of Alabama. And from there, each city has a chapter that participates. And we have, the chapters that we have here in Alabama is the Huntsville Chapter, Tuscaloosa Chapter, Mobile, Birmingham, and then Montgomery, which I am the president of the Montgomery Chapter. And this young man here to my left is my vice president. His name is Richard Smith. He's also pastor of, associate pastor at Mount Luther King Baptist Church. And what we do, what the main organization does is it looks out for the welfare of the totally blind and visual impaired. We have different people that works with the legislators to make sure that bills are passed and that they're not discrimi, that the blind are not discriminated against. And also, we want to commend our probate judge, Mr. Love, that he provides the machines that are for totally blind people when they vote, and we want to commend him for that. And also, what I'm here today too also is we have an annual fundraiser which is statewide. We have it every year. This year, we was planning on having it at Idiom Park in person, but due to the COVID, we will do it virtually by Zoom. And the reason I'm here this morning, I was asking that the County Commission would be so kind to donate to our fundraiser. We are trying to raise fifteen thousand dollars and for this particular fundraiser, which we have every year. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask them for you, answer them for you, excuse me. And then I do have brochures that I would like to leave each one of y'all to, so you can really know what all the, what the Federation does. And excuse me, I didn't mention too what the Federation does too. It also helps people who are blind and then people who recently lost their vision. Matter of fact, we have one of our members who eventually lost his sight due to diabetes. And what we do is we hook him up through another organization called AIDB, which we work with them a lot. And what they do is they provide different things to help his life much better. You know, they, with like phone to net, have different cell, his cellphone, like my vice president, he has a phone with him. And what it does, it talks to him and let him know, you know, who he could tell the phone who to call and different things of that nature. Then they also have a thing called JAWS, which what that does is that help a totally blind person to be able to work at a computer. And what it does, it talks with him when he logs into his, get ready to log in, it talks to him and tell him different functions to do. And what I, reason I'm here too, I just want to let you know that blind people, even though we're not sighted, we can do basically anything that a sighted person can do with technology. And reason I'm saying that, because I own an internet radio station and two of my DJs are totally blind, but if you was to listen to them, you wouldn't know it, you know, if I hadn't have told you. But I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here. And I also, like I said, want to ask you for a donation so kindly.
Yes, Rob.
Yes, sir.
What, what's your main source of funding?
Most of our fund is fundraisers. You know, we go out in the community and we let people know about blind and we try to get, you know, we also, you know, try to get them to join our membership. And we basically run off donations, but each member has to pay, when they become a member, each member has to pay a twenty dollar membership every year.
What's, do you have an annual budget?
I don't have, like I said, we basically just woke up. Only thing I know right now in the Montgomery Chapter, we have maybe about a thousand dollars in our budget right now. And like I said, due to the COVID, we weren't able to really get out and.
Do you have a five or one C three?
Yes, sir, we have one of those. It's a nonprofit.
And so, I've been knowing Mr. Robinson for a while. I don't think I realized he was visually impaired because they, they get up and they, they go to work and they, they are engaged in, in the community, as he said, he owns a radio station. And so, I'm just wondering, the fifteen thousand dollars, that's what you're asking for?
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to raise, but I'm just saying whatever the council feel fit to donate, we would be grateful.
And if y'all had an opportunity to do the actual walk, if it was not for COVID, what would that usually get you, that particular, that annual event?
It'd probably get us more because the reason we're not able to do it now, because of the transportation that most of the people would need to get there, because of COVID, they do not want to transport no more than one person. And that's one reason, that was one reason we went virtual this year. Now, back in 2018, we had a real nice turnout because it was, you know, it was personal.
What I need you to do, what we need you to do is your five with one C three, get it to our administrator or the deputy administrator, so we could, if it's a jet, if it's a jet.
Okay, no problem.
We'll be looking at your requests, your donations.
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you. I'd like to give each one of y'all a brochure, you know, so you can know about the organization. Do I, do you give the clerk or just give one of y'all individually?
Yeah, may I pass them down?
Okay. Again, I'd like to say thank you for your time, thank you.
I think this next person already spoke, Margaret Gully, Gully.
Captain, you're here with Ms. Jackson, I'm ladies live.
Okay. Then we got Arthur Sigasson, topic of discussion drainage.
Chairman Dean. And to the County Commission Award. My name is Arthur Gasson, I reside at nine seventy Mitchell Young Road. And I'm here because of a flooding drainage problem that's been going on for quite some time, for some years since I've been there. The county engineers came down and they did shoot a grade on the ditch and said there were issues there that they could do something. But the engineer, Mr. George Speaks, he just won't give them the okay. And he tells me there's nothing that he can do about it. So, my problem is if the engineer shot a grade on it and see there's some issues and that they could do something about it, why is it that nothing is being done about it? My property is being flooded, my house has been flooded, I had to rip up the floors of carpet, and I'm a little afraid to redo it because I don't know what the flood situation might be recently or sometime in the future. So, that's hindering me from doing what I need to do. I've done everything that I can do on my property for us to flood an issue, but because of the drainage problem, that's where the issue lies, so.
You said the, the engineer said something was wrong, but he is engineer. George, what y'all got to say on that?
Yes, we went out and ran a profile on the ditch and from that house, and it was basically just plain, and it rained down toward the railroad and the swamp, it's like a rock there, the swamp, that's where the railroad is, railroad and it become road. And we, we looked at that problem several times over the years, and just going on for years. But when the water hits that swamp, there's nowhere, nowhere for us to go, it just starts backing up. I said that eventually, in dry weather, it'll dry, it'll swamp, drain all day, just dry it really slow, really, really slow. We, we went in there and ran the grade and see if we can make a ditch or ditch out, we have to get the water. If the ditch problem, or if that's not, they did some, they did some water in swamp, it starts backing up.
Can you send the overflow somewhere else, George? When it started back up, can you send it somewhere else?
Uh, no, so that's it, that's the natural way to the ground, it goes down the railroad, back in that swamp, going down to concrete.
Because that, and really, in the Gasson property is the only one that is really affected more than any other property on Mitchell Young Road, you know, their property, just about crossing.
Have you looked into a solution?
Sir?
Have you looked into a solution to the problem?
Yes, I've done a few things. I've graded my yard and I cut a drainage ditch through the swamp area, but that's my land, also my property, all of that. So, I've done everything I can do, it's just that when it gets to the highway, there's nowhere for it to go. It's slow drains off. Now, when they redid the highway for the Hyundai plant, they built the highway sort of high on my side and sort of wiped out most of the drainage ditch. But on the other side, where the Hyundai plant is, water used to be all out there when it floods, but there's none out there now. It seemed like water's being challenged to our side of the property from somewhere.
They stopped natural flow of water, back it up on your property, sir?
Yes. There's no drainage ditch. I had a contractor down there years ago, he was going to build a drainage ditch for me, but somebody from the county stopped them and told them it was private property.
Somebody from the county?
Yes. As a matter of fact, he, he was building the drainage ditch. And then we got so far, they told him, we couldn't do it, he had to stop. So, that's my problem. I don't know why, nothing can be done about the drainage ditch. But, but y'all never have tried to do anything about it. You look at it and that's all you do is look.
Well, like I said, once it hits, there's nowhere for us to go, it's back to, there's nowhere to get out.
So, if y'all shot a grade on it and say that you can do something, you see high and low spots in it, that's why the water's not draining.
No, we, the grade we read, it was like a two tenths of a centimeter slope, not where you can get on that, which is basically almost level, just not enough power to get the water out of there. And then I said.
So, George, what y'all saying that, saying that in mostly, every heavy rain, they pretty much had that problem. So, what we saying?
For years.
What we saying, what y'all saying that, that every time it rains, they're just gonna have to be afraid of, their house gonna flood again, nothing you can do.
I don't, I don't know, we like, like I said, it's been going on for years, years and years.
Yeah, but that ain't, that ain't, that's not where you can't do that. What, what's, what's, what's on the other end of the swamp? Can you let, the waters, the waters backing up over there, what's, what's?
That, that's my property.
Can it run through there?
They part.
Can it run through the swamp, the water?
It's slow drains, but before it, before it drains off, it's on my property flooding.
Well, I mean, you know.
And that would have drought, it'd all dry up, and then drought.
Yeah, but drought, drought, yeah, everything gonna drought, you don't know what if it drought, you don't know rain. But every time it hit a rain, it's gonna.
But George, if you were, if you were to fix the problem though, what, what, how would you fix it?
I, I don't know, I don't know any way to fix it.
I thought that's what engineers do, they find and fix problems.
Yeah, it causes, you got to drain your swamp, but it causes, it causes, not with bush and dead wood, wetlands. That's just not big.
The swamp's private property anyway.
Yes, private property.
What, the ditch is on, ditch is on the right of way?
Yes, I, I ditch, I wrote ditch, like I say, it, it'll drain, but it's backing up out of the swamp, you get a ditch running.
There ain't nowhere else to drain.
Well, it's really affecting us down there. It's about four more houses in that area that it affects. As a matter of fact, my neighbor had to move out, move out of his house for probably six months or more because it flooded his house and he had to.
You know, you.
Cut the walls and everything down, two feet from the floor.
There are other houses that are like that, you know, they, what comes to mind is that there's a house just, just this side of Cotoma Creek down Old Selma Road. You go down there, when it's dry, it's just as dry as it can be. But you let us get a good rain, and that rain, that creek swell up, that house right there next to the creek?
Mm-hmm.
Some places, you just can't build a house. I mean, it, it'd take a lot of money, it's gonna take a lot of money to go down there and try to fix, fix that. You know what I'm talking about, George, just right.
Yeah, it's just up the way.
Yeah.
Drains off, they're draining, but it's really slow, it's back there.
That's what it's sounding like you got going on on your property. We can't do a whole lot of work on private property anyway.
You can't do no work on private.
Well, we can't do anything on private property, but if, if, if anything that we can do, if our ditch, if we can do something in the right of way that's gonna relieve it, we, we'd be ready to do it, but it sounds like there ain't nothing we can do.
I have, I have looked at that and I have looked at that. If they just come down there and just scrape the ditch, it would help a lot. Oh, scrape the ditch.
Scrape the ditch.
Scrape the ditch, you're just gonna have a belly, it's gonna hold water, that place would be everything.
Well, it's all right to put the ditch, hold water, fill the house with water.
Real flat slope now, so anything you dig out, it's just gonna be like a pond.
Well, is, is it all right for the pond being the ditch is still in their house?
Uh, that's basically, when that water, what the ditch fills up before it's in town.
The water don't have anywhere to go, that's why it fills up.
So, again, that's backing up out of the swamp, you got water coming in behind it.
Okay, well, anyway, everything is so nice on the Mobis side of the highway. I don't know why. Get the end, look at it. I mean, at least we can show that we are concerned if there's anything around that ditch on that street out there. Like I said, I, I remember the other side where Mobis is, water used to be over there, but it's not over there, I guess because it's high and their part is low, so. And Mobis side is low and it's all graded so that the water can float.
Ms. Chan, we have a similar situation in Madison Park and Flatwood, and I've been doing a lot of studies about retention ponds. And I don't know, because I hadn't been out to, to the property, but with your permission, I'd like to come out there and just take a look around.
You should do.
Because there's some, the federal government doing some studies on retention ponds and how that really helps to mitigate flooding in lowland areas. So, you know, I'm not saying the county would be involved in that, but I think it's something that we need to look at. And it may be some money for that, not necessarily work on private property, but to kind of mitigate some of the problems we have with drainage.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And like the old saying goes, taxation without representation is discrimination. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Okay. Give me liberty or give me death. Okay, Karen Jones, Ms. Jones.
Good morning.
Hey, Karen.
Um, I'm here today to talk about something that I think would bring.
Let's go, let's go, Ms. Jones.
Uh-huh. I think.
You want to pull your mask off so we can hear? You don't want to? Okay, I understand.
I, um, I want to bring something to the attention of our Montgomery County that I think could be a pilot program and could be a catalyst for the entire state, providing a community COVID resource center. What myself, Bishop, Bishop Crawford, Minister Felicia McCord-Bell, Minister Karen Schufert, and others have been doing during this COVID are providing soups, teas, and we have COVID kits in which we place on individuals who contact us, porches. Out of everybody we've been helping, from the hotels to wherever they live, they haven't gone to the hospital and they yet live. So, what we're seeing during this uptick in COVID, since the onset of COVID, everybody is pushing vaccines, but nobody's pushing mitigation strategies. And that's what is needed in our county because poverty and COVID is, is, is a connecting force. When you have poor people who work in two jobs, they may have to quarantine because they're sick on their first job, but they going to their second job. And that's why our numbers aren't going down, because they can't mitigate and pay bills. A lot of people still don't know about the ERA, the emergency rooms and utility assistance, and even still, it's not an instant impact to paying the bills. If you're not out there with people, understanding the issues and engaging the community and trying to teach a mother who lives in a household with three or four children and she gets ill, how to teach the children how to also mitigate and when mom use the bathroom, how to make sure they go into the room. It's strategies that we teach, it's strategies that's not being taught. Last week, we had four calls of suicidal ideations. They're not calling the suicidal hotline, and one called and was told to call the next morning. So, the mental health issues are real, the hospital beds are full in Alabama as far as mental health, and we're seeing an uptick in our youth having crisis situations, and it's just no bed, so they're having to deal with the issues of mental health at home. What, what we want to do is come together and collaborate, collaborate with other providers because we're, we're using all our resources to help, but we want to make sure that the urgent needs of, of individuals and organizations who need PPPs, we have been gifted some, two, two vehicles to help transport if we need to items. So, we want to train the, train the youth, make sure our senior citizens are taken care of, where they don't have to go so much outside, you know, and the disabled, and produce community wash stations throughout this county of Montgomery. And what that is, is like, we can make the barrels and put a spigot up there and put water in there so our homeless people, we're seeing it everywhere, can at least wash their hands. So, this is something that we've been seriously thinking about. Our houses are getting inundated with the materials we're using to try to make these COVID kits, to push them out there. So, we want Montgomery to have a, a center in which we do this for our people in the community.
What's, what's all in the COVID kit?
Uh, we make soups and teas, and it's, our grandmama's recipe can't give it to you. But we also put the Vicks Vapor Rub or the Dollar Store Vapor Rub. We put the, the alcohol, the disinfectant spray, and we make our own disinfectant. We put vitamins, we put sea moss gel, that I make sea moss gel as well. We also put things that they may need in that kit. It depends on that family, if they have children. Every household has a different need, you understand? So, we specifically make it for that individual, because if you're quarantining in the house, you can't go to the grocery store. So, we're making sure that they have sustenance while they're in.
I mean, how, how do you, how do you, you have a, a specific location that somebody have to come to?
No, 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 no.
How do you do that?
We, we go out, we go out, they call us and we go out and put it on their porch. That's what we've been doing with our own resources, and we're getting low now because we're getting calls, we're getting, I mean, it's, it's a whole lot that we do.
How many people you thank your service?
Since last year.
Yeah.
Well over a hundred. Well over a hundred, and we prevented them. And that might not sound like a lot, but it is, because once you get that one individual, that household might have three to five family members. So, you're also mitigating them and preventing them from getting it, because when schools send one child home who has been exposed, the other parent might have three other children, and they're not relaying the message that the whole house must quarantine, because if that child has been exposed, you have been exposed and everything in your house has been exposed.
Educate them as well.
Ma'am, sir?
You educate them as well.
Yes, we educate them.
What kind of budget you got?
We hadn't even created a budget, because we've been using, I use my food stamps, they use their resources, we're putting together and helping people, and we get our blessings back, you know? So, we're doing what we can with what we have, we, we don't even put together a budget. Thus far, I guess we need to put in a deeper budget.
Put a budget together.
Yeah. But we just, we just, we just running low on our own resources and my other cohorts, their merit, so that's getting kind of frustrating for the merit life and.
Well, I, I've helped Triple J and I've helped to whom.
Yes.
Who can make concern with their various projects, it sounds like one that's worthy.
Yeah, and I, and I really think that we're being certified in contact tracing, CPR, we've gone through the FEMA and CDC trainings. So, it's not about just vaccinate, vacci- So, it's not about just vaccinate, 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 because people have been getting those breakthrough, um, cases. So, I'm not even into vaccination, I'm trying to teach them what to do to prevent, educate, and to try to just lower this, and it's really, it is really, um, is exhausting, but it's, it gives them hope. Because if you keep seeing people dying and death is being taught and talked about, they don't have hope. And I think that lowers your immune system, and they get sicker.
So, who is that, uh, your, your group in your 501(c)(3) is, uh, who, who will make a sum, right?
Yes.
Then the Triple J is, uh... Yeah, I know, but, uh, what I like to do, uh, commissioners, I know she, she's before us now. I like to take, uh, initially five thousand dollars out of the joint register, joint fund, donated fund, and, and give it to, uh, to whom it may concern. But that's her 501(c)(3), she can use that money to do what she needs to do to help them out for a time then. And then during that time, they can let us know what you expended on.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna get with the city too, because it's, our homeless population is just really...
Yeah, I mean, if you're doing all the things that you, you know, that you say you're doing, I, I mean, I think that goes a long way in helping to mitigate the impact of COVID, particularly with the contact tracing.
Yes.
I like the way you all approaching that, because I think the school system could perhaps use a little help.
They won't listen, I've tried.
But, okay, but there are number, there, there's, there's so much money out there to help mitigate, uh, COVID. And, and if you could, again, I'm not trying to tell you what to do and necessarily how to do it, but I'm suggesting that if you could put that, uh, in some type of narrative form and maybe get you a little brochure or something, you know, depicting what you're doing, I think that you probably might be surprised that you might have more money than what you really, really anticipate getting, because there's millions of dollars out there to help mitigate the impact of COVID. I think you need to present your program in a, in a manner, you know, so that, uh, you can actually receive some of that funding, at least be in line for some of the funding.
Yes, thank you.
One of the things that we can do what we do right now, and then we probably can assist her and direct her. She don't know where to go, she know how to do it, so if you just give her the name.
Yeah, and I, and I, and it's, I mean, all people, it's been, but it's been good because they're living. They're not dying, they're living, so...
I like to get with you and...
Yeah, and you, yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Because our stuff in FDA approved, but our grandmama's stuff wasn't either, and we still here.
Go ahead, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you here for what you do. Okay, that was it.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of September seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
I don't have it up.
Oh, wait, yeah, where is it? It's not up there. All right.
There it goes. Who moved? Sandy moved?
Yeah, I just moved it.
Mine's on here. Just waiting on somebody to second it.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm trying to get it on.
He got plenty of time, I guess. Oh, yeah, 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 I liked him, John. I miss John, I mean, I really do, I like him.
Okay, all right.
I liked him.
You, you vote? Yours is on the vote list.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
I'm over approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Ron's got a vote.
Our new business have public comment regarding the proposed twenty twenty-one operating, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two operating budget and construction programs fund budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, well, that's not, not time to move you.
Is there a motion?
So, are we moving to go into a public comment? So moved.
Second.
Sir. No, not public comment.
What's this now?
Is there any public comment?
I thought we had a...
It's public comment time.
Item number three.
Yeah, okay. Any comments on the, uh, operating budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two? Seeing none and hearing none, okay.
Consider the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order. Okay.
Consider the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two construction programs fund budget.
Move for approval.
Second. I'll say you can have that one.
Thank you.
Any objection?
Doug, now that's you.
So order.
Consider ratification of Project Safe Neighborhood Sub Grant Award for the Sheriff's Office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider amendment number two to the contract with Bob Barker Company for hygiene products for the detention and youth facilities.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider lighting service agreement with Alabama Power to upgrade the leased lighting fixtures at eight hundred Terminal Road.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider lighting services agreement with Alabama Power to upgrade the leased lighting fixtures at ten fifty Day Street Road. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Isaiah. Trigger happy again.
Trying to, trying to win today or something.
Consider enhanced data center backup and recovery for information systems.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider cyber liability insurance renewal through Lloyds of London.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider excess workers' compensation insurance renewal through Midwest Employers Casualty Company.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider medical stop-loss insurance renewal with Optima Insurance.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider award of employee group life insurance to MetLife.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider property insurance renewal with affiliated FM Insurance Company.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider excess liability insurance renewal with State's Self Insurers Risk Retention Group. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider open records request policy for the Montgomery County Commission. So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with a correction of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from Chairman Harris to Capri Community Film Society and two thousand dollars to the Alabama Cooperative Extension System for the Expanded Food Nutrition Program.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of forty-five thousand dollars to the Strong Foundation for Parking Lot, uh, removal of the two thousand dollars to the Alabama Cooperative Extension System, and the addition of five thousand dollars to, to whom it may concern.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection?
Objection.
Okay, oh, we got, uh, four, four yeas and one no.
Consider budget change request number two for the Appraisal Department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider budget change request number one for the County Commission.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider budget change requests numbers fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen for County Commission appropriations.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider hiring a buyer one at pay grade AO five, step five for the Purchasing Department.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider hiring an account clerk at pay grade AO four, step two for the Finance Department.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for an Administrative Support Associate and two Public Safety Communications Dispatchers.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider position fill request for the District Attorney's Office for an Investigator Two and an Investigator Three.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
Consider travel training request for Engineering and the Sheriff's Office.
Both approve.
Second.
Any objection? So order.
We have waived rule items to continue, to consider an agreement with the District Attorney's Office and the Alabama Department of Human Resources regarding child support services.
Any objection, waiving rule?
No objections, move approve.
All the papers say aye.
All right.
Consider a contract with the Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts regarding reimbursement of costs associated with the annual audit of federal financial assistance received by Montgomery County.
Any objection, waiving rule?
No objections, so moved.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Doug.
I got you.
Consider a resolution temporarily designating the City of Montgomery Multiplex as a courthouse annex to accommodate judicial duties and court proceedings.
Any objection, waiving rule?
No objections, move approve.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye. Consider a traffic enforcement grant agreement with the Southeast Alabama Highway Safety Office for the Sheriff's Office.
Any objection, waiving rule? Any objection, waiver rule?
No objection, move for approval.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Consider a cooperative agreement for the State Homeland Security Grant Program.
No objections, move approval.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you have anything?
No, sir.
Deputy, uh, administrator, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mrs. Singleton? Single?
Nothing today, sir.
Okay, all right. Was it thinking?
Uh, yes, um, just wanted to recognize Mother Fan, she's in the audience, an outstanding citizen. Uh, I call her mother because I love her. Uh, she is a citizen of the month.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, for September, uh, the Montgomery Advertiser recognized her and her face is all over the internet. So she has, uh, international acclaim for being citizen for the month of September. And we just want to applaud you, uh, Mother Fan. Uh, raise your hand so the folks can see you. That's an outstanding citizen and very engaged. I think she's ninety-one, ninety-two, she, I don't know, I don't believe she's that old, but she says she is. Yeah, ninety-one, bless your heart. Also, I have, uh, some people in the audience from Newtown where I grew up at, uh, Ms. Sharon Harris and her brother Marzett Harris, one of my dear friends, we went to elementary school together. And, uh, he's back, I think he has about thirty or forty years, uh, in counseling and, uh, and, and, uh, behavior health. So hopefully we'll be able to use, utilize his service, uh, yes. I had an opportunity to go over to Baramas Community on yesterday because I had some of the resident call me regarding rodents that were just running all over the place on my rats that were coming out of the sewer, even getting into their homes. I believe that, uh, the Water Working Sanitary Sewer Board is trying to, uh, repair some of the, uh, the sewer lines by, uh, spraying in some type of plastic and heating it up with hot water so that it can expand uh, and perhaps seal some of the, the cracks in the sewer line. And quite a few rodents are running around there. And I also had an opportunity to note the deplorable condition of housing over there. And we have quite a bit going on in terms of economic development in Montgomery County, the City of Montgomery, millions of dollars, and we're all proud of that and the jobs that we're creating and so forth. And there are many beneficiaries, uh, of these investments. But we still have communities that look like third world countries right here, uh, in the City of Montgomery. And hopefully we can begin to pay attention to that and help, um, to mitigate some of these housing conditions. We know that housing and health, uh, direct correlation between where you live at and, and, and your state of health. And so hopefully we'll be able to do something about that, uh, with some of the money that has come down as part of the American Rescue Plan. Uh, I think, uh, the Treasury permit, uh, use of that money, uh, to address some housing issues, uh, particularly where they impact health. And so we want some long-term, um, consequences. I'd rather we want, uh, uh, some, some outcomes that have long-term impact on the health and wellness of the population. And so hopefully we can really begin to take a close look at how some of our citizens live in the midst of all this economic prosperity. Thank you.
And Mr. Walker?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Harris.
I just want to, uh, once again, uh, uh, say welcome to our new associate or assistant, uh, county administrator, uh, Mr. Uh, Kendall Anderson. Uh, we are looking forward to great things out of you. And, uh, again, uh, to say farewell, our public relations expert Hannah, uh, good luck.
Okay, now we can adjourn, this is really going to the.
Emergency management.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we, uh, need to adjourn this meeting.
I moved it, Jerry.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye. Now we, uh, want to emergency management meeting for the budget.